Mr. Beazek told me I should start this next session with a joke, but he didn't know any clean jokes to tell. So I gave you a quick one. How do you make holy water? We boil the hell out of it. All right, on that bad joke. Thanks again for all the candidates for being here this evening. We're going to follow the same format as we have with the school board candidates. And each of you are going to get two minutes to make an opening statement. And then we'll ask a series of questions. And I'll tell you before each question how much time you have to answer those. So Mr. Oglesby, would you start with your opening statement in two minutes?
My name is Richard Oglesby. And I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the chamber putting this on. It's a privilege to be here before you tonight to be able to express some of the ideas and thoughts that I have. And I just want to tell you that what I've said from the very beginning of my campaign was that I am, I'm not running against any of the people that are sitting at this table here tonight. I'm running for this community because I believe that I have something that I can offer. I have a unique aspect in government because I spent the last 33 years of my life working for the city of Ottawa. I have some knowledge that is very hard to gain unless you've been in that position. So I think I have a unique aspect to be able to look at things. And I have a unique aspect to be able to look at the budget because I've been working with it for a number of years as well. And so I just want to ask you to consider me as one of your potential candidates to represent you on this city commission. And like I said, I don't believe there's anybody that you can lose with here tonight. So, thank you.
I'm not sure if I can turn this on.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Sharon Geis. Thank you, chamber and everyone for putting this on. It's great to be here, a little nerve-wracking at the moment. I came to Ottawa 40 years ago to attend Ottawa University and chose to stay here for all those years. I have a degree in business administration and 25 years of work experience in various administrative roles. Most recently, I spent 13 years as the executive director of Min America Nutrition, which is a not-for-profit corporation. Prior to that, I had 12 years as the director of a for-profit home health agency. So I have a lot of experience in different fields. I've also served as a trustee for the Ottawa Library. I've had some state roles with the Nelson Wills Association of Kansas and even had the privilege of serving with the Nelson Wills Association of America at the National Board. I consider myself a fiscal conservative. I love Ottawa. I love the small-town atmosphere. But I also love the fact that we're close to the big city. And while I am a fiscal conservative, I recognize the importance of being forward-thinking and proactive in growing Ottawa and making it a great place for all people to live. To me, that means growing our infrastructure and making sure that our schools are the best they can be. If we aren't proactive, we will lose our young professionals to the cities to the north and east of us, those cities where many already work. I want Ottawa to be a community that we can all be proud to call home. And that's why we'd like to be on Ottawa City Commission.
Good evening. Thanks, guys, for coming out. I also want to thank the chamber. I think these events are a very important part of this process. We don't have as many opportunities to get to know local candidates. My name is Sean Dickinson. I've served on the city commission for two years. And when I started on the city commission, I got some advice from some former commissioners. And their advice was for the first year, you just hang on and you have no idea what's going on. And for the second year, you start to come get your feet beneath you. You'll start to understand the budget schedule and how the city works. And then by the third year, you can start to really feel like you can make a difference and that you can really take your ideas and help implement them and make the city better. I spent those last two years listening and going to meetings and boards and a lot of other things. And I think our city's in a really great spot. But I also feel like as I've invested in the community, the community has invested in me. And I'm looking forward and hopefully being able to continue helping the community on the city commission. The experiences that you get, the opportunities you have, you really can't get in any other place. And I think some of those opportunities, we're going to stay at national places or conferences. And there's a lot of things that we have in our city that we take for granted, our historic nature, our historic background, our great parks. And I think that we need to keep highlighting some of those things that we have not yet utilized.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Kaler. And I know that everyone here has thanked the chamber, but I want to thank individuals in particular that are taking their evening out to actually make this evening happen. Almeida, Bob, Ryan, Louis, who's keeping our time, Tony and John. Thank you for taking the time out of your evening to make sure that this evening can go so seamlessly. I appreciate it. You know, four and a half years ago, when my husband and I began talking about my interest in serving the community in a greater capacity, I knew that service was not new to me. I'm a social worker by trade. I've been educated at Emporia State University and Washburn University. When I ran for city commissioner, I was not running against anything or anyone, much like Mr. Oglesby has said. Neither am I running against anyone now. I want the opportunity to better our community. And I want to be impeccable with my word. I know that it is paramount as my job as a city commissioner to be impeccable with my word. I pledged four years ago in my campaign to focus on streets and sidewalks, to build and rebuild our parks. I believe that I've kept my word. In four years, we have added over 20,000 feet of new sidewalks in the city of Ottawa, nearly four miles that have interconnected our city. In addition, we've built or rebuilt, installed 61 new ramps, sidewalk ramps in our community. Parks have been my passion for the last several years. The city of Ottawa is proud to be called a playful city for the last several years. And this national recognition has provided us an opportunity to receive grant money and build a completely new inclusive park at Kansas Park nearly three and a half years ago, and a new playground just this last year at Forest Park. We've made a commitment to adding new play equipment to every park, and we've acquired new park properties here in the community. I have been grateful to be a part of the city commission and would ask for your vote to do so again.
Okay, thank you, everyone. This first question, we'll give you each 60 seconds. On a number from 1 to 10, how would you rate how the city is doing on growth and economic development? And why would you rate them the number that you do? And I'm going to start with Mrs. Geis, 16 seconds.
I think I would rate Ottawa about a seven. I think there's always room for improvement. But I know we have some really good people in place. The chamber is, I believe, doing a superb job of working with economic development. And the downtown merchants have united and have a strong coalition working towards improving the downtown area. We've seen some marked improvements with the beautification in the downtown. Sarah's already mentioned the great parks and the things that we have going on. There's always room for improvement. We've brought some great businesses to the community. I think one frustration I've seen is that often the managers of those businesses choose to live outside our community. And that's something that we need to address because those are the people that we would like to keep here that can fill the positions on the city commission, the county commission, and a number of different areas in the community.
Mr. Dickinson.
I think those are really two questions. As far as growth, I think I would say five. There's a lot of factors that we are working on now that will lead, I think, to that number going up. As far as economic development, I would say that would be eight. That's been kind of one of the focuses for the past at least 12 months. The one area I would say that we really lack still is in small business development. We have, we're working really hard on new street. And let me say, this is nothing against the ethnic development group that we do work with as a city. I think they are worked as far as they can for what we're asking them to do. With small business development, businesses like Calmar, which used to go on a truck, and Hasty Awards, those are examples of small-town businesses that have raised themselves up. And if we could find some more of those and give them the support that they need, we could really start to see some more of that industrial park that we just bought, built by hometown home-growth businesses.
Mrs. Kaler.
You know, I think that we want to be careful about not calling growth just meaning numbers and meaning population because I do think that there's a strike in our population. I think that we can consider growth when individuals step up and when individuals become involved in our community. And I think in that aspect, I think that we're probably, I don't know, a seven. I think, much like Mrs. Geis had said, is that we always have room to grow. If you're not green, you're not growing, it's not good. However, I do think in economic development, we're doing pretty darn good. We have, just a few months ago, closed on 300 acres of land south of I-35 that's going to build our new industrial park. It is building capacity for the city of Ottawa and Franklin County to actually bring those quality jobs and grow our economic development here in our community.
Mr. Oglesby, sorry.
Thank you. As far as growth goes, I think that's exactly right. You can't look at population necessarily. A population is not dramatically different than it's been for the last 15 or 20 years. However, when you begin to look at our community as a whole, you've seen tremendous growth that's taken place, whether that's the beautification of our parks, the beautification downtown that's taken place. You know, you can't argue with the fact we have one of the most beautiful downtowns that you can drive across the state to see. And that's primarily because of people have decided to step up and volunteer their time. As far as economic development, I think we're on a really great path to develop some possibilities to happen in our community economically. It's one of those things that I believe that this commission and the next commission will have to continue to monitor, continue to keep their eyes upon and whether or not policies and changes need to be made so that you can stay on top of the forecast of what's going to happen within our state. So thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Do you support the upcoming city sales tax vote in September? The city sales tax increase vote and why? We'll give you 60 seconds each. And Mr. Dickinson, would you start?
Yes, I do support the upcoming sales tax on September 1st. This land that the city purchased, it's just one step. But we, as we looked at the budget and even the past, we really have lacked in economic development strategy. Not, and this is not just the city, but this was also the county as well. This is really a tied issue together. I think that this could be a county thing if this was something that was allowed by the state legislature. But right now, the city is the only one that has the opportunity to do that. So I do support that. I think that is where we are going to see our job growth and to build some of that capacity for the future.
Mrs. Kaler.
The upcoming sales tax initiative is actually, it needs to be understood in two different ways. First of all, one half, one half of this penny right here is a sales tax that will sunset in 2016. That was put in place in 2006 and it was used to actually reduce the mill levy that everyone pays. And if we don't actually pass that sales tax initiative, we are going to see an increase of possibly 12 mills to our current sales tax. And no, that it can mean a reduction in services. So absolutely, I support it. Note that that half-sit sales tax alone makes up over 11% of the city's budget. It's critical that it passes.
Mr. Oglesby.
I totally support the sales tax that's on the ballot or will be coming up on the ballot this fall. It is crucial to pass that because of what Commissioner Kaler said. Without that particular sales tax passing, that half-sit alone, it would put a tremendous amount of stress upon the city's budget all by itself. It would also not give us the tools that we need to be able to develop our economic plan to go forward. We can have a park, we can pay for a park, it's the land that's out there. But we need the infrastructure to get that thing really moving. We need the infrastructure to be able to bring in the kind of businesses that we need for jobs and growth to build this community and to cause it to grow and increase that tax burden upon other people besides the people that are here right now. So it's crucial to pass the sales tax, in my opinion.
Well, I guess we're unanimous up here. I too believe that we need the sales tax. I think sales tax is one of the most equitable ways that we can tax people. I think it's fair, it's across the board, and it's rather painless in many ways, although taxes are always painful for somebody. I think what would really be dangerous is if it failed to be renewed, we might find ourselves in a situation such as the state is in where they have this tremendous short budget shortfall. And I'm sure none of us want to see our city in that situation where they have to try and figure out how the kids need. So yes, I absolutely think we ought to renew the sales tax.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and we'll do 60 seconds on this one as well. How do you think the unpaid streets on the north side should be improved as well as curbs throughout the city being updated and repaired? And Mrs. Kaler, we'll start with you, 60 seconds.
You know, I do think that is an issue that we do need to discuss. And I think it's an issue that's not only been something that we've discussed this last four years, but the four years before that, and the four years before that. We did try something new this year with the city commission, actually, and it may have been last year. I'm not quite sure, but it was in the last two years that we've done this. You know what? It was this year. I'm going to say it was this year. Where we did some, just some experiments on some of our gravel streets. And it has worked. I actually drove down that gravel street, which is actually located over by the Dollar General store on the north side, where you would pull in to go to the car wash. And there is reduced dust there. And I do think making some initiatives like that may be something that we want to look into as a short-term fix. As a long-term fix, we need to pave our streets.
Mr. Oglesby.
I used to work road construction, so I'm very familiar with some of those issues. I can tell you that one of the solutions that the city can look at, potential for some of those streets that are on the north side and other places in the city, is the ability to go in and do some what we call chip and seal. It's a way that construction to a road can take place. It's a little bit cheaper than asphalt. It helps to build a base, keeps the dust down, starts to build a more solid street. As far as the curbs and stuff like that go within our city, if you were to drive around a town, we've made a lot of improvements, but we've still got a ways to go in a lot of our streets. There's a lot of areas that are missing curbs. We're missing curbs that allows water to get underneath the road base. That deteriorates our road base, and we begin to lose streets. And that's the last thing we want to do is lose what we've already invested in. So it's an area that's going to have to be looked at, so.
Mrs. Geis.
Well, I wish I could tell you that I have the exact plan that's going to solve that problem. I do think it's something that we have to do little by little. And I think the city is making some progress in that area. It's not something that we're going to be able to do overnight. But as revenues become available, it is something that needs to be a priority in our community. And I guess I don't have anything more to say with that.
When my family moved to town 22 years ago, we lived on North Birch, which at the time was gravel street, and I think it burned our trash there as well. And now it's, you would not call it the edge of town, but at that time, it was the edge of town. But just seeing that neighborhood improve when the street was paved and all the other improvements that have been done in that part of town, you're able to almost, there's more pride in your neighborhood if you have those opportunities. The hard thing about it is that citizens who don't live on those streets, it's really hard to get them to buy into getting a tax increase for maybe something, some of those streets are on an outlined part of town. But I do think that it's something that we need to keep considering. And even if it's a little out of time, definitely moving towards that.
But there's been a lot of talk about maybe adding more handicap parking spaces in town, downtown, and handicap, increasing handicap accessibility in general within Ottawa. What are your thoughts on the current state of handicap accessibility? And what are your thoughts on maybe improving that down the road? And I will start with Mr. Oglesby, 30 seconds.
Thank you for that question. As a member of the Accessibility Advisory Board for the city of Ottawa, I can tell you that that's something that we have looked at. And I actually, with the former temporary director of the public works, actually took him out and drove around and showed him a couple of opportunities that would make that pretty possible in some of the blocks that are downtown, to be able to put in those same type of parking spaces like are in front of the plaza or also in the 100 block west side of Main Street so that our community can become more accessible to everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Geis.
I think we've done a good job of making handicap parking accessible to people. I know there's a lot of discussion of changing the parking in downtown Ottawa. I just came back from a trip to California. We were in an area where they had parking down the middle of the street. There's a number of things like that that can be done now that Main Street's not a state highway. I know we have a lot more flexibility in that. I know there's a lot of different ideas out there that we need to look at those and figure out what's best for our community. And maybe we do want to put some parking down the middle, but the handicap accessibility has been vastly improved recently. And I think there is good parking for our handicapped individuals.
Mr. Dickinson.
I am in favor of more handicap parking downtown and overall, just more accessibility throughout the community. The board is, the accessibility board that Mr. Oglesby brought up is a great example of how the city's moved forward. And they've been able to give us a lot of good information that we can use as we're looking at some decisions that we're making. The other thing that was also mentioned was the ramps that we've been putting in. Sometimes it's good when something's mandated and they make you do it. This is something that even with families like us that have a double stroller that we're pushing down the street, it's nice to have those extra ramps.
I'm so glad to ask this question. I actually, as I told you earlier in my intro, I am a social worker. And my initial job was actually to work with the individuals that were on the physical disabilities waiver. And I can tell you that we have far to go here in our community into making our community completely inclusive of individuals who have all different kinds of issues. And I believe that we took a huge step a few years ago by creating the Accessibility Advisory Board. I'm so glad that Richard was able to serve on that board than does now. I think that we have many other opportunities in which we can make our community completely accessible.
Thank you. We'll go 60 seconds each on this question. Where do each of you stand on the proposed USD 290 school bond issue? And in your thoughts, how will that impact the community if it's passed or if it's not passed? And I'm going to start with Mrs. Geis, 60 seconds.
As the grandmother of two little boys who are going to apparently attend school in here in Ottawa, I'm very much in favor of having the best schools possible. Obviously, that's essential for economic development as well. It's a very large bond issue. There are lots of good things in it. I personally would like to see, have seen it presented without the Performing Arts Center because I would like to see this building refurbished and better used. I will be voting in support of it because I think that there is so much in it that is so essential to the success of Ottawa and Ottawa's schools, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dickinson.
When I first, I went to some of the pre-meetings and when I first heard the number, I, like many of you, were kind of blown away by it. But as we've started to see some of this stuff happening at a state level, we're seeing that this may be the time, that the time really is now, as I saw on the way here. Overall, though, I would say that we need to continue investing our children. I have got two kids, and we're going to vote yes because we want them to be in the best schools they can possibly be in.
Thank you. Mrs. Kaler.
As a graduate of Ottawa High School Systems, I am proud to say that I will be supporting the bond issue. I want everyone to know that there's essential elements in there in which that I am really fearful that if they do not get upgraded, that our kids will be left behind. The science rooms at the high school are the same exact science rooms that I went to school and took science in. And it's the science room that my uncle taught in for years on end. And it wasn't adequate at that time. Those things need to be fixed. I do believe that there are some elements of the bond issue that we really vetted in deep, deep, deep discussion for about a year and a half. So anybody who thinks that we didn't, I was part of a committee that for a year and a half, every single week, we met and talked about what is important about schools here in our community. So I would be in support of it. I think strong schools make for strong citizens. And I think that it just makes for a better Ottawa.
I would say that I was a little sticker shocked when I first saw the number, as I think probably a lot of people were. But I also realized that we have to look at the whole package of what we're doing here. And schools are a major part of that. When you begin to look at economic development, people begin to look at everything that is involved. And schools are part of that. And if we don't have the infrastructure laid in place in our schools, we don't have the infrastructure laid in place for our power or our water or sewer, all of these things laid out, we're not going to be a presentable candidate for a lot of businesses to want to come here. So this is just another tool, in my opinion, that we have to develop. And so I would be supportive of it. I was not involved in the meetings as some of these were, but at this time, I really don't believe that we have a whole lot of options. I believe now is probably the time to do it.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Mr. Dickinson, and we'll go 60 seconds on this as well. As a city commissioner, what public services do you believe the city commissioners need to evaluate? And what possible areas would you believe need to either be increased or decreased as a city commissioner? And Mr. Dickinson, 60 seconds.
I think one of the things that we've been kind of looking at constantly with the county is some consolidation of services. There are some areas that, for instance, maybe public works, where when a road ends at the end of the county or at the end of a city and starts the county road, it makes sense that we just have a one department that takes care of all those things. As far as increase, I'd say public safety is something that we are constantly looking at. I think we are a little understaffed. And we definitely are underpaying our public safety, our police officers and our firefighters. That's something that we've recently done a weight study and fixed a little bit. But overall, I think that's something that we should continue to look at. As far as decrease, I don't think I have enough time to think about the entire question. But I think that's answered my question.
Thank you. Mrs. Kaler.
You know, I think some of the things that people see here in the city of Ottawa are actually quality of life issues. And I think that we can always continue to evaluate those particular quality of life issues. But if the underlying issues aren't actually taken care of, then those parts and those things that we see every single day, they have to come second. And I would agree with what Commissioner Dickinson is saying, is that we do need to do a little evaluation. I think first and foremost, we really need to evaluate the 911 memorandum of understanding that we have with the county. I believe that the county should make that an actual county utility. I don't believe that as city taxpayers, your phone call to 911 should cost you any more than if you live out in the county, and it does currently. I would like to see increase of public safety also. And I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but I would like to see that. I think that our police department and our fire department
I think that our police department and our fire department do an impeccable job. I think there's an opportunity to do even better here in the City of Ottawa.
Thank you. Mr. Olbysby?
City services that could be increased, that's, that's an interesting question. I'd answer it this way, that in my opinion, what the city has, the most important aspects that it has for assets are its employees and its buildings. And I believe that both of those we have to take care of. As somebody who worked for the city for 33 years, I watched a number of people come and go that we had invested a lot of training and a lot of hours into. They left, a lot of them because of wages, a lot of them left because of working conditions, so on and so forth. I hate to lose that kind of investment, especially if you, if you were to bring in a firefighter, you're talking about losing somebody with, you know, probably $3,000 or $4,000 initial investment the first day they walk in the door. That's not something you can easily recoup. And it's the same thing with police officers. Police officers, you're going to lose, when one of those walks out the door, you lose them for at least six months to a year. They're of no value to the city because they'll either begin training or they'll be at the academy. So I believe that we can increase our services by trying to take care of our buildings and take care of our people that work for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Geis?
Well, I agree with what the other three candidates have said. I know that we've lost public safety officers because our wages are not competitive with surrounding areas. Any business is hurt when you have a turnover of staff, and it doesn't matter what that staff does. If you're losing staff, it does cost you a good amount of money to get them trained up and ready to be of service to you. So we definitely need to be proactive in making sure that our wages are comparable with those in the area. We also need to keep our buildings up, and this building is a good example. I think one of the things that will be interesting if I am elected is to find out more about the studies that have been done on utilization of the auditorium. I know that's been a big concern to many people in the community, and I hope that I have an opportunity to learn more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Would you consider changing the structure of the ORC, Ottawa Recreation Commission, to aid in funding art as a recreation and different art programs? And I'll start with Mrs. Kayler, 60 seconds.
I'm not sure that we have the capacity to do that, would be my, would be my initial answer. I'm not sure as a city commission we have the capacity to actually change that structure. Because we are not the funding source for ORC, the school district is actually sets the, and gathers the mill for ORC. However, I do think ORC has tremendous value in our community, and I do think arts are important. I'm not sure if they go together, and I guess I've had, you know, what, 30 seconds to think about that. And I think that really that particular issue needs a much, much further amount of time than 30 seconds. So I think the jury's still out on whether or not I would, would ask ORC if that was within our purview to take on and to incorporate arts.
Mr. Olbysby?
I think the ORC's role is really busy enough without adding art to it. I think art's very important, and we want to develop more art within our community. I believe there's a vehicle in place for that. I'd like to see us try to expand some interest into young adults and our youth in trying to develop some of that talent within our local schools and try to maybe form type of art clubs and things like that that could possibly do that. But I don't believe that ORC's probably the proper vehicle.
Mrs. Geis?
I think it's always interesting to examine the status quo and look at what the possibilities are for change in the future. I don't really know enough about the structure of ORC to really make an intelligent answer on that. But I do think that we need to be careful that we don't just keep doing the same old thing because that's how we've always done it. And ORC is probably a good example of that. We have that wonderful Gopert Center that gets a lot of views in the community. Sports is certainly a huge value to our, particularly to our young people. But arts is a valuable program for our young people as well. There might be an opportunity where we could expand ORC to include more art programs, and I think it's worth taking a look at.
Mr. Dickinson?
Well, anybody that knows me knows that art is definitely one of my top things that I care about. To answer the question, I don't think that ORC is the route through which that funding or that the artistic classes or whatever it may be is the best, best function. We have been able to start doing a lot more support of art in our community. I think this guy's brought up a really good point here with this, with this building here. This building has the potential, we have really underused, both this building and the Old Carnegie Library. So those are two buildings that we don't even have to build, but that we just have to find ways to better utilize and do, offer more arts opportunities. So that, that's where I see we could spend our time and our money, is in, is in the buildings and facilities that we already have.
Okay, thank you. We have one last question, and I'm going to give you each two minutes to answer this question and then kind of summarize your opinion to see for the Ottawa City Commission. The question is, please talk about your vision for the future of Ottawa in the next five, 10, and 50 years.
My vision is to, to make this community the best possible community that it can possibly be. I want us to reach our potential. I want us to be able to provide the type of services that I believe our citizens depend upon and should have. And I believe that's having the best police, the best fire departments that you can have for a city of our size. And I'd like to see our city begin to grow. I'd like to see us be, be able to start to build houses in our community again. I'd like to see rooftops going up. I'd like to see the growth take place in our community that, that I would like to see it, you know, that would bring good jobs. I'd like us to be able to keep our youth here in our community instead of when they go off to college and never come back. I'd like to be able to see those kind of things take place in our community. And that's going to happen when we are able to provide good paying jobs, where we're going to be able to provide good quality housing, and homes and places for people to live. In the same time, it's going to be able to produce the type of retail atmosphere that many of us desire to see our, our community have and provide for the people that live here. And so, in summary, that's part of the reason that I'm writing is I believe that I have some insight, I believe I have some knowledge about things and how they're, they're going on in our community, and I would like to be able to offer that to this community at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Geis?
When I came to Ottawa 40 years ago, Olathe was, was, was not a separate Kansas city, it was a separate community. We've certainly all seen as Kansas City expands and grows, that, that growth is coming down I-35. I think for years we've anticipated that Ottawa was going to get caught up in that growth, and I think eventually we will. I think one of the challenges before us is to hang on to the wonderful things about being in a small town while we embrace growth and advancements. We do have to have the best schools possible. Because it's such a wonderful place to live with safety for our children and so many opportunities here for our kids, we want to make sure that our schools, train them up so that when they get out of high school and go to college, they can come back and find good jobs. In my own family, I have one child that left Ottawa and is sure that she's never coming back. I have a second child that very deliberately came back with his wife to live in Illinois and just loves it here. So I've seen both sides of that coin. We do have a lot of work to be done here to make sure that we stay ahead of the curve, that we keep things moving and growing, that we plan ahead so that as growth does come to Ottawa, we're ready for it, we have the streets, we have the sidewalks. We want to keep that downtown area to be vibrant and alive. We don't want to have vacant buildings there that are decaying. And that takes our whole community working together to come up with ideas and to support one another and keep Ottawa vibrant and growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dickinson?
I think in terms of five, 10, five, 10, or 50 years, you have to look at what is attainable now. As far as five years, I think there's some quality of life things that we can continue to support. We're moving forward on parks. We have a couple of new properties. Can I borrow your penny for a second?
Yes.
One of which we've bought for just a penny. So using some of those opportunities to continue to develop our parks as our community grows and make sure that there are those areas that don't have access to parks to get those. The arts that we talked about, continuing to expand the access to arts, both as spectators and as, and as participants, continuing to do that. And I think, within the next five years, I think we'd like, would like to see the first partner in the industrial park either moving in or having moved in and really establishing a strong footprint out there. When you start looking more into the 10-year goal, I think we start looking downtown. We have a great downtown, historic downtown. There's lots of potential there. We're continuing to add housing downtown in some of those upper levels above some of those businesses, adding more retail and eating options throughout the community, public art, capitalizing on our trail system. We are the only city in the state of Kansas where the Prairie Spirit Trail and the County Trail will cross. So I think that is a great opportunity that no other city in the state of Kansas is ever going to have the opportunity for. And then in terms of 50 years, we hope that that industrial park out there is full, and that we're already looking for new land or expanding because we have enough jobs for those that are living here and more people moving here. But at the same time, we want to keep that art historic feel. When we talk about growth, we talk about sustainable growth, something that, we're kind of at that spot right now, where the things that we like in this community, we can't continue to hang on to if we don't grow a little bit and find that spot to level on with it.
Thank you. Mrs. Kayler?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight because I understand this is our last question here, so I do want to thank you all. You know, when I, and I'm sure you, several of you have heard me talk about a book that really changed my life called The Four Agreements. And I think that within that book gives me many answers, and it's something that actually since the very first day that I've been with the city commission, I've carried The Four Agreements with me. And I think that that can be a roadmap for us and keeps us, can keep us on the road. I don't know that I have the answers of where we're going to be, and I'm going to go backwards in 50 years. I don't know that I have the answer of where we're going to be in 50 years. Now, what would I like? I would like for us to maintain our identity. I'd like for us to continue to do our best. And always doing your best is one of The Four Agreements. For 10 years, I'd like for us to tackle the issue of brain drain. We educate kids here in the best, best that we can, and then we send them out into the world, and unfortunately, they don't always come back here. I'm a product of this school district, I was educated here, and I am blessed to raise my children here by choice. And I'd like for us to actually issue kind of a challenge and actually solve that challenge where kids are graduate from either technical school or from college, and then they rush back to Ottawa because there's so much here for them to do, and there's so many opportunities. Lastly, five years, I would, as much like Commissioner Dickinson had said, I'd like to see our trail system grow. I do think it's a gem that we don't actually even realize that we have. Bike riders talk about it all the time. Believe it or not, we have people who actually trolley their bikes down here or bring their bikes down here, and they ride our trail systems all weekend long. Pretty exciting. I'd also like to see a full industrial park. Yes, Jeff Seymour, I would like to see a full industrial park. So I think there's so many opportunities in the City of Ottawa, and I consider the privilege that I've been able to be your city commissioner for the last four years, and I'd like to be, the opportunity, and I would be honored if you would vote for me again on April 7th.
Okay. Well, thank you again to all the candidates for being here this evening. I love you all in the upcoming election. A couple announcements, advance voting will begin next Monday on March 30th. The general election is on Tuesday, April 7th, so please remember to get out and vote, and let your voices be heard. I want to say thank you again to the Ottawa Chamber of Legislative Action Committee. Thank you to everyone that helped with this, helped us this evening, and thank you for the water. Thank you for our sponsors, Franklin County Park Bureau Association and American Legion Post 60. If there are any other questions or updates about advance voting or when and where the elections are going to be held, I'm sure anyone from the community would be glad to stick around and talk to you about that. So thank you again for coming this evening. Thank you.